Tonight, everybody's ready? Thank you for attending tonight. This is a special meeting workshop Tuesday, December the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five at six o'clock. I invite everybody to bow your heads with us for what we're prepared. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for this night and for the time we have to come together, Lord. I ask that you be and will be a good testimony for you and make good decisions for the city of Georgia and all that we say and do to honor and glorify your name in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Field, stand with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First thing we got on the agenda is update on the water and sewer budget. I think Michael Morris. Michael, come on up. How you doing? Put on him that she wanted to have some updates or something about what's going on with water and sewer budget.
I haven't seen the spreadsheet as yet. I have the line on this office for listening.
He hadn't seen the what now?
The spreadsheet.
Okay.
What we've been from the line item.
I have a question for you. I know previously when you were in, there were a lot of meters that were being read manually. How many meter and we're doing some meter replacement. How many meters are now having to be read manually?
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head.
Has it?
We did, we have got some in since then and we're starting to put them in.
Okay.
Like ones that we know are manual and like some of the bigger meters like the Saturday after Thanksgiving, we came in and changed the one at Dixie Cup. That was an old analog meter that just wasn't working. We have to wait, schedule that when they're gonna have the plant shut down.
Put it in the ballpark, just what?
Probably at least a hundred and fifty. But I know there's more just blanking out each day.
Are you saying approximately a hundred and fifty that's still need that you're doing manually?
Yes, ma'am. And we have others that are blanking out all the time as well.
Yeah.
They're just, I think they were purchased in two thousand eleven. They have a like ten year battery life, but warranty. Our system is way past that, so that's why we decided to phase them in. The new ones have fifteen year batteries.
Are these being done on a systematic basis, being replaced?
As we find them that that blank out, we'll generate work order and then go.
Can't just, go ahead. We can't just replace the batteries?
They don't, apparently they build them where you can't change the batteries. Even if you cross thread the nut for the washer on the meter setter, that meter's no more good. You have to send it off.
Any particular area that you're finding that? Is this all over?
All of it, because they were all changed about the same time. So you have some that just last longer and some that, you know, like cars. You get two cars, same model, one might run three hundred thousand miles of them. Might third transmission and seven. I guess it's luck to draw.
So I remember last year, Sugar came before to ask us, we purchased some meters and we were supposed to be changing them out. There were two different kinds of meters. One meter was supposed to be for like a high turnoff. And then there were meters that he said needed to be replaced because they were being read manually and we're trying to cut down on that because it was time consuming for you all. So I guess what I'm trying to get is a sense of how many, because we did, we authorized the purchase of those.
We ordered part of that. And then we only have two field techs that are out there doing that.
Okay. So have, have you been able to install the meters for those that were supposed to be high turnoffs?
Some of them didn't.
Some of the meters that were for those that were being manually read, that's what I'm trying to.
Well, when you get the meter, you have to get a new satellite cord as well. Because once you marry those two together, they're together. So you have to get both parts. Then when you put it in the hole, then you have to program it to the sides and then make sure that the connection's reading. And then sometimes you can make the connection in the field, but it's not reading right on the software in the office. So then we have to go back out and start a process over.
So you have everything you need to do that or you're still missing?
Yes, ma'am. And we've just been doing it along and along and trying to cut down. But trust me, we want to cut down as many of them as we can because it's not fun.
Sure. So how many do we have on hand now?
I think our last batch, we had a hundred come in. Close to there.
So you've used some of those, right? So how many you think you have left now?
At least fifty.
Fifty to be installed.
I saw you all busy over the weekend.
Yes, sir.
What happened on South Main there in the Habitat House area?
It started off as a small leak and the weather changed. The six inch main first. Just weather change in it had a little crack at the top and it just ended up splitting most of the way around.
Were you all able to do that and not have to hire it out?
We, we did it that night.
Yeah, I saw you at it, I think you were.
Just trying to get it to dry out some more because it was soaked up under that water, run up under the asphalt and stuff. So even after you fixed it, it stayed running back in the hole.
But it fits.
Yes, ma'am. We didn't leave until the guys knew.
But why are we waiting on the, you all to talk about their budget and everything? Is it okay if we kind of talk about Magnolia Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just give us, so we would know what is the problem there? You know, what, what you're having to, to fix? What you have done so far? What it's going to take to complete?
So the pipe came in today along with the tapping saddle. Once the locators are up, we've already called in. We can lay the trench and then you put all the pipe together, make all new taps. And then we have to supercorinate the fifty part formation and let it sit for twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And then flush out an entire line for disinfection and then we can hook it to the meter.
So where are we?
The pipe was delivered today, this afternoon.
And you're telling me, okay, all what you just explained is from that. Now, how long and when will we complete? Because you know, the residents there, this has been over two years now. And what, and the way you explained it, it seems like a simple job. It's not simple, but.
Water line.
Yeah.
Say that again?
It, the word is not.
Seven hundred and fifty-five feet. That's.
Yeah, it's not simple. I don't mean that being, it's just.
The first time we went to tap it, we found the AC line on the other side of the road where we were originally going to do it. But we can't tap that line.
Okay.
So we're having to go through the Limous Street and to do it. We're going to start at that end and then work our way to the corner.
So when you get on that end down in the Bucoc Street and all those tree roots?
Yeah, we'll cut them all out. And then after we cut them out, we're going to put a concrete barrier in there where it can't push on our line or the road anymore.
Okay.
And then, and while we're doing it, we're just going to dig them out the road.
The roots, not the trees?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're looking at now what, time wise?
Couple months. We should stop on, can't stop. We've had a bunch of sewer projects, especially the past three months. Big ones.
Okay.
Just for informational purposes, the cost for the cost for when you have to replace seven hundred and fifty-five feet anywhere, what kind of expense is that?
Water line's pretty cheap. I think the total for, for just a pipe was like twenty-two hundred dollars. And you're talking about that link in sewer pipe for like an eight inch sewer. If we do it and we're only buying the pipe, it's like eight thousand dollars. If a contractor does it, you're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand per six hundred foot. And we have forty-three miles of gravity sewer.
So will you all be able to replace and make the Magnolia or you'd like to contract it out?
We're going to try to do contract with a trench slip.
So we're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand per hundred feet, huh?
Per six hundred.
Per six hundred.
We've already done three hundred and fifty.
Oh, okay.
We did it ourselves. On the other end. It just takes that with tape. Waiting on right now, maybe three months for us to be able to do something else happen. We have to pull out and then go there. Take all the equipment with us, everything, not just send the post over. The machine trucks, everything has to come out the hole and then go there.
And then just like Sunday, you had how many people helping you and who else?
Uh, two of them.
Two of them, you were in whole world?
Yes, sir.
In the world. We appreciate it. Does it look like you've got enough money on your side of the budget to handle these things that are coming up?
I hope so. We did pretty good last year. We haven't had anything too catastrophic. We did have to get a contractor to help us on a blown four thing last week. It was a twelve inch and we got it patched the first night we found it. But just feeling the pipe, we could tell it was already splitting. Good news, it was plastic pipe, it was done fairly recently, but every stick had made the same. They fixed it and it blew out a couple of feet back the next night. There was a bunch of sand because the first night it took us, I think it was right at eight hours just to get two pipe to see because you're fighting. I think I estimated close to a hundred thousand gallons of sewer that was going to run back on you. So you gotta try to mitigate that risk while getting to it.
We having to pay overtime for that kind of stuff?
Absolutely. And I think Friday night, the guys were here till almost nine. We had a lift station that the control panel burned up in and we were getting settlers to help pump it out. Because the new panel was supposed to come and something happened with shipping. And they botched it to kind of totally all out of our hands. So we had to install a bypass for it until the panel could get here. And then there was a leak in going manner that we had to go through that stuff.
So with, with the issue with, you know, trying to find sewer lines and, you know, I know you were doing some GIS mapping. Is that still in progress? Have you been able to like map out the, the majority of the system or all of the system?
Majority of it, but like in, um, end of October, when DHEC called us, there was a twelve inch line that was broken. It wasn't on any maps, no one who existed. We still don't know where it's coming from. We found out where it goes and got it stopped leaking. But we still have to lay a hundred and fifty foot twelve inch right here on Wells Street. We're bypassing it right now, so it's not, you know, hell out of the place.
Oh, damn it, okay. So that's under control now?
It's been under.
It's been under control, but you've got to find a permanent fix for it?
We've got the stuff out there, but just with a small crew. There's a water leak, you have sewers hitting the ground somewhere else. It's an all stop on that project to go to the next one.
Are you short staffed?
Everybody is.
So what's the status of that lift station on Limous Street?
Last time I spoke to the engineers, the control panels, pumps and everything has been ordered.
Do they have an estimated date of arrival? So they're going to come in and do the lift station on Limous Street?
We've already, that was approved by RIA a couple of months ago. Now it's waiting on people to get the parts and all to the contractors so they can start their work.
Oh, okay.
It'll be a hinged in submersible station just like all the other ones.
Okay.
It won't have that green dog hat on. All that'll be going away, control panel will be up top, be a circular senior pad with submersible pump.
Yeah, you know, they are.
But we went with a different brand pump because the warranty was better. I've used them before. The current pumps that we have at the other lift stations have a thirty-six week hold time. The other place that they're giving by.
So we looking for twenty twenty-six, good working stuff.
Yeah.
That's when they would start them up.
Trying to work your meeting.
It appears that, um, I'm gonna pass this out, but I'll get you all a copy for your own use. Just that around. I don't know why, but it just seems like, I mean, I've used that for a while.
I did want to say to you that some of the, the residents on Magnolia Street, that they had some good remarks about even though they were experiencing a lot of problems. I would commend you and some of the, commend you on how the, the fellows talked with them and, and complied and tried to help with. I did want to let you know that there were.
We didn't, that water.
So I want to thank you for that.
Yes, that's why we wanted to put that water line in because it's old.
Yeah.
And even when we drove across it during that sewer line, it would break. So we were just going to put a hole in the line in while we're doing it. So we don't have to dig up anything else. And that's a summary for the year. What we've accomplished with six people.
So when, when Andrew asked you about that, the mapping and all that, that thing up? That included our locate, those some identifying where our, um, the water lines or water meters that we haven't been able to locate and had some problems with.
Now, once we find them, whoever had put them on GIS the first time never got out of his truck.
My.
So he would drive by and see the meter and match the button. So it, it gives us like a sixty foot variance, which is a good spot. You know, but now we can take the G and stick it and it'll bring us within one inch on your phone. You can walk right up to it. And then anytime we find a water line that doesn't exist on any maps, we hit that to locate this as well as sewer lines. And then have our maps updated periodically.
Is that helpful?
Very, very. Because some of the meters, you know, have that much grass on them. They can still read from the tower because it's off a satellite. If you actually have to physically go to it, you got to find it.
Okay.
Y'all installed a new water line or at least a new tap on Casular Ferry Road right near Pocket Road. I heard y'all are waiting on a box to come in. Whenever that box come in, can we get it replaced?
Yes, sir.
Did you ever get that list together, those streaks that y'all cutting that leave paper?
Yes, ma'am. I told Ms. Hawkins earlier, I'm updated, we had to update this to her tomorrow. Because we made three or four cuts last week. We got two more that seem that it happened in this piece.
Did you get that all the council? Would you get that all the council on you?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Pretty much on, on track as far as you can tell, this is the budget information, is this, um?
He hasn't seen that, I, I prepared that. I've had a conversation with Ms. Benson. I was not able to put new, uh, line items on the, on the system. She will try to do that for me. So I just gave you a, um, high level overview of those accounts. Where the budget is, where we are now. Water is doing seemingly pretty good, um, at five hundred and sixty-nine thousand revenues over expenditures. The general fund is under by seven nineteen at this point, uh, according to the numbers through November. But on next month, uh, we will be getting some, our main amount of tax receipts at that point. And so, once we get that in, I think that will even it out. And we'll, at the end of December, do some more analysis of where we are and what, what the highly, highly, uh, the expenditures are. I did go for some, we should be at the end of November about forty. Forty percent, uh, fifty percent at the end of December. Some are over fifty, but the majority are kind of holding tight at this point. It's just that we have not, um, had a lot of remittances at this point and it's not expected until January.
I have a question, and it's probably just me, about the water and sewer fund. On the left, we've got budget three fifty-nine nine eighty-eight. And then to that, we've got budget, uh, three million five fifty-one nine eighty-eight again. And then at the eleven thirty, the first line is a million nine nineteen and the second line is a million three forty-nine. Are they representing the same thing or what are those numbers?
So a balanced budget would, um, balance revenues to expenditures. That's why you see the number repeated at three million five hundred fifty-one thousand nine eighty-eight. The top line represents your revenues, which is indicated by that bottom, um, title, revenues over expenditures. So the first line is revenues, the second line is expenditures through November thirty.
Revenue and expenditures.
Yes, sir.
So that would indicate that we've got the five hundred and sixty-nine thousand currently in the water and sewer fund?
No, that's just for what you receive. It, it doesn't represent anything, no, sir.
For sewer funds.
Just what is in expenditures at this, at the end of November.
For spend less than.
For the budget year.
If we've spent, spent less, then we should, we've got five hundred and sixty-nine balance.
Conceivably, but you've not finished your budget year, so you can't really count that as something in your handle.
But currently, we've got the five, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And we will continue to collect water and sewer as we go forward.
Second page, does that then mean that we're over?
It does. As I stated, you won't get the bulk of your receipts until Darlington County releases the taxes. So there's a number of revenues that we receive all through the year, all the way up until July.
Is this where we utilize the revenue bond, if I'm calling it the thing where we borrow money for the short term and replace it with the tax, taxes that we collect or?
I wouldn't suggest that, no.
Well, I just know that we have passed some ordinances before that have authorized borrowing should it become necessary. The question I guess is, has it become necessary? Or have we still been able to cover operating expenses even though we are technically in the hole at this point?
We've been able to cover operating expenses, yes, sir. You do have some reserves. And this is not unusual for most cities and towns.
And based upon the information you've been able to collect, do you have some sense of what our revenue will be, when we get our tax collections and based on historical evidence, sort of when that revenue is coming in?
End of mid-January, February.
And do you know at this point in time what the estimated revenue will be?
Let's see, we budgeted to receive, um, I don't have that on here. Uh, let's see. I don't have those budget figures in front of me, Mr. Milling. If I felt like we were in trouble, I would let you know that. Every city, um, and municipality has to wait on that huge amount, um, to come. And yes, we're probably using one balance at this time for any unders, uh, revenue to, to pay out defenses.
I know, but you've got historically numbers from last spring.
I don't have it, I don't have it, no, sir. But I can get it for you. But you should have it too. I, I think you asked me for water. I only gave you that as information on general fund, uh, to give you an idea of where we are. But I don't think there's a reason to panic at this point. We would, as I stated, every month, um, and especially after we receive our receipts from the county, then we'll probably level out with the expectation. Again, you're receiving, uh, business licenses in April. You're receiving some intergovernmental revenues as late as June, over until July and August sometimes. So those are, um, things that we have to estimate will be counted as revenue for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year.
All right, any further questions? Okay, thank you. Michael, just a second. The update on Magnolia Street, you're satisfied with? Everybody was given all that?
Yeah, yes, yes, Magnolia Street was.
Okay, um, just in case I need a question. A discussion to allow sewer connections to Asborough Street. We had discussed before, um, about possibly trying to annex in, we can't get everybody to change their mind, take a fourth one, wants to do it, then they decide not to do it. But, uh, the contractor is here, he's interested in going ahead and moving forward. To my understanding, if I state this correctly, um, the contractor is agreeing to, um, put the sewer lines in, which disconnect to the, to the homes for outside sewer from outside the city. Is that, is that correct? From my understanding.
So it's my understanding, freezing weather here, is Michael asked your permission to let me pay for the sewer line extension? And so that's what we're going to do. Obviously, given your authorization.
Okay, that's just so it'd be no cost to the city. They're just, we were trying to get, where we'd get annexed in, but we can't get all the property owners to agree, uh, back and forth so, uh, so he can not be stalled. Go ahead and move forward, build the homes, um, and see if the county, if anybody's interested. He, he's already got county water, right?
It'll be actually a combination of county or city water, actually. All of the homes will be on city sewer, so that there would be taps as respectively appropriate. The city would receive tap fees as well, in addition to the free extension of the sewer line. So that would all be applicable in that instance.
Okay. All right, so what changed since the last time? My understanding that you.
Alright, so what changed since the last time, my understanding that you can.
So, what changed is.
Yes.
There are two parcels that block all of my land from direct access to the city. And I cannot annex into the town without having direct connection for every parcel. And so, as a result, uh, that property owner refused to annex, and so I can't convince them.
You just left out that kind of, okay.
And so I, yeah, I can't physically do it, uh, you do, it's, my understanding you did change your, your outside of the city utility rates, um, or that was an ordinance last time I was here.
Yeah.
And so you will be receiving increased revenue for these homes as well. But all we're asking for is permission to run an existing, well, extend an existing sewer line.
Let me ask you this, this is just because, because it's obviously county, you in county, you're outside. County, the, you don't make, you understand, county don't have their own sewage.
No. No.
They all come, connect to the municipalities. And that's something you don't want.
That's actually physically impossible on that property, we're not perked for a septic.
Okay, that's right, the septic tanks, I don't know why I'm answering, but I'm just to know what.
Please close enough, you can lock that door or something.
Things to be kind of clear for me.
There's more to pay for the maintenance fees to get connected to the area.
So now, so, so, so now, because of the one just blocking, blocking, he's completely saying, no, he don't wanna annex. So you, okay, so we're gonna go around, him, so that person have sewage line already?
No.
From us?
No.
Okay, alright, I mean, I hate this.
I understand.
Yeah, but I thought, yeah, 'cause I was really for this because of the annexation and this, and you know, that, and seemed like everything's falling apart.
Or any of your properties.
So I just, I'm trying to see.
Being annexed in, or is everything on the other side of the?
Everything is outside of the city, unfortunately, uh, but they will be again, using only the city services of the water and sewer, and will be adequately paying for that.
So, I'm, well, maybe that's more true, 'cause I know last time when we were here, um, we were told the other property owner who said was more than willing to annex in, and I know you said that, um, you know, I was on board with that, because you were so adamant about them, um, the weight that they put on our system when we start allowing people, and you were adamant about making them annex in so that they pay their proper share, because although they are paying for the use of a service, their tax dollars are not being given to us, so when there is damage to the sewer line, city tax dollars have to pay for repairs at a place that's outside of the city. And you drove that home for us, and I appreciate that, and I was so very thrilled to know that these people would annex in, that we don't just allow them, as you stated so many times before, just to come in and, and use our services, but not pay, you know, their fair share. So I, I would certainly like for us to, what do we have to do to see if we can't get them to annex in?
Yeah, have another property owner to do it, if, that, my objective when, when I pushed him for that is that if he came to us and just wanted to get the sewer line, didn't want to annex in, then I would say, you need to annex in, but he's willing to annex in, but there's a blockage, so the blockage avoids it, where he can't get there, we can't make the other person annex in, even though they said they would, and they said they wouldn't, and they said they would, and they said they wouldn't, so they're back and forth, so now, at this point, they.
So that person, that other person, a contractor?
Another property, another property owner is, is asking, saying that I don't wanna do it.
It's a contractor, so he's hoping now, once this contractor installs the water and sewer lines, past his property that will turn around and let him tap into them as well, without annexing.
He said they wanna pay the additional taxes, so they wanna be annexed in, so that's what I was told.
But it's like we're being manipulated by the people, but that's the way, you know, but anyway.
You're willing to annex, you're willing to annex, not you.
Correct, and I submitted that application, however, I physically cannot, is the issue. Uh, and so that's where, if that becomes a possibility in the future, I'm happy to do that, or, or, or contractually obligate the future residents to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, that's not really a material issue, it's just, and as your administrator will tell you, you cannot annex unless you are physically adjacent, yeah.
Yeah, so only one of yours at this time would even be eligible.
Correct, however.
The one at the very beginning, if I remember correctly.
The problem I also have is I can't have two different municipalities with my arrangement with the builder, they're not willing to handle that or deal with that. I can't have it be both city and county, otherwise, they're gonna walk away, and I don't have a builder, and then it doesn't get built at all, that's part of the issue.
So, I'm just here that you're fine with contracts that are writing in there, that the property's become annexable, that they will be?
I don't know what mechanism that contract would be, but yes, as long as it doesn't impact the timeline of the actual construction of the homes.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I got, I want, I did wanna say, I wasn't meaning that you were manipulating.
No, I said.
I, I felt like the contract that, that.
Unfortunately, yeah, it's, it's the property owner in the middle who's causing some headache.
We're being manipulated by that person.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, the person that owns a piece of property is, is told me that they didn't wanna continue to pay additional taxes on their property, uh, throughout the years, they feel like it was an investment, could they have, they already have sewer and water on their property, or your property, you can't, um, get sewer on there, so, you know, they didn't, nobody's trying to manipulate anybody, they just don't wanna pay additional taxes, and I can't, we can't force them to do it.
One thing you said, you said is, a septic tank cannot be put out there.
Correct. We'll have to give water and sewer when we get ready to build.
That's the problem, exactly.
So you don't have any other choice, so, if you don't have to get on.
So it's my understanding that all we need, because in order to, to build a sewer line, we need, uh, Michael here to sign off, and all we need is for you guys to tell Michael it's okay to sign off on the application to the state for the construction.
I'm fine with that, I would like to, um, write up some kind of contract, see if it's something that you're, that is fine to not harm you with your future developer, with the annex, annexation part of it.
If it becomes available.
If it becomes available, we can put a two-year hold or something on it, so that it's not in the middle of, it's simply like some of your property may actually touch, which would make it where.
It doesn't impact it in the short term.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Um, if that's something you're comfortable with, I would appreciate that, I'm still fine moving forward, uh, since we did our best efforts.
I'm Brady.
Brady.
Brady Sanders.
Brady Sanders, the baby Brady.
Brady's interested in building more Darlington, we appreciate it.
We're looking at more opportunities to, to bring more homes, more residents to your community.
Alright, and you know we're interested in that Brady, so I'ma hold you to it. I'll hold you to it. And we go on with this, and well, because you can't do anything else, I too. For allowing so.
Thank you.
We appreciate your efforts trying, I'd like to motion to approve the sewer connection to the Asbury Sixth Street development.
We don't really vote now, 'cause we've got discussions.
Discussion.
We're gonna have to hold off, 'cause it's just.
I don't think you need to vote on anything, just provide authorization.
No?
No.
We can put it on the discussion. You can put it on the discussion.
But why?
We don't even need to vote.
You have a best plan.
Yeah, they say we don't need to, so I'm fine with that.
Okay.
We're good. We're good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a great night.
You too.
Alright, a discussion to remove fence on the city property on East Broad Street. I'd ask everybody to, if they had time, to go by and look at the fence over there. One, one end has a, a gate, one end doesn't have a gate, it's not secured. Uh, Georgia Pacific's spending lots of money on the other side over there, trying to clean that area up, and um, that's our property, it looks pretty rough, the, inside the pipes, all that's supposed to be being moved, rest of that dirt's supposed to be moved out of there. Um, just see if we can remove that fence, um, to have it tidied up over there, if everybody's fine with that. Any questions on that?
Do you have a plan for the, for that piece of property?
No, we don't, we've been asking everybody to come up with ideas, but we'll do that in two thousand twenty-six, watching them come up with ideas on a piece of property, or they've, they've suggested possibly a fire department, or anything of that nature. So, we're trying to make it not look like an eyesore.
I don't think it's, it isn't, to me, they're more like an eyesore, we do need to cut, well, we need to clean up all of the dirt and the pipes, but I'd almost hate for us to remove the fence, because that allows anyone to start driving and parking there. And now, since, you know, especially we've got all these long-distance trucks, these eighteen-wheelers coming through town, and with that new, um, warehouse coming, they, they're looking for parking, and they will end up parking on that lot, and damaging that lot and the asphalt, and then when we're ready to use it, we'll have to pay to resurface it, I almost think.
There's no gates on it, so there's still anybody can park there.
Well, they can't, the, a, a, a big truck can't turn into that little gate right now the way it is. But I'd almost hate to see that come down.
Then they used to park eighteen-wheelers in there.
Twenty foot, twenty foot plus gauging by driving.
Yeah, they, they, they used to park eighteen-wheelers in there.
Yeah, they used to be parking for employees.
For employee parking, not for eighteen-wheelers.
Never seen vans in there?
And there may be at some point.
And some again on their pipes, and they're reporting.
Yeah.
I'm sort of like, Angela, I've got some concerns, while I don't think it's pretty, as pretty goes, um, I think even without a gate, it's somewhat a controlled access, um. And I don't know that it's good just to have that space available for anybody who wants to utilize it, I mean, it's the kind of thing that, if we don't want it being utilized by the public, then we need to, uh, put some kind of signage up that says, this is not public parking, or something to that effect, so that we've got the ability to move people off of it, who may not realize with the fence gone, that it's not simply a parking lot, and, so those, that's.
I always like to see it cleaned up, it's just, to me, it would be rather as hassle, whether you remove the fence or.
I, for me, it's, it's not so much of an eyesore, as I am concerned about regulating the use of that land, it can't come through.
One thing I was gonna suggest, if we're interested in removing, and I, I can go either way, that's, that's not a hot topic for me, but if we're to get rid of the fence, put it out to the public, see if somebody wanted to take the fence down for us, have fence, sell the fence, something like that, um, if we're gonna keep the fence up, I just ask that we go around and clean up all the weeds and stuff, and beautify, um.
It just needs to be cleaned up at least.
Yeah, manicure it, um, there's a lot of vines and stuff going on, from what I notice. Put the tip around, you know, man, I was gonna step on that.
If we can get somebody to clean up that area, make sure the rest of the enters cleaned up, where it's a little rough, this is, this is rough over there.
I haven't paid any, paid much attention to it, but I'm just saying, if you, if you think it looked that bad to do, but we need to just, just, um, upgrade it, make it look right. You can't just take it down and don't, and we don't have a, a, um, a purpose. And if it is for us to maintain until we are able to, we come up with a purpose as to what we're gonna do, then we need to do, we have, we need to, it's just like you're saying, and you said it in a, in a, in a way, but we just need to make it, if, if it's an eyesore to, 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 you know, to make it where it's not an eyesore, but we definitely have to have it restricted. And I'm saying, once you take the fence down, it's not, uh, the public will decide how it's used. If we don't do that, while we take the fence down, have in plan what, how we are gonna have it restricted. So when you take it down, have that, because it, it will be decided. And so, then maybe the longest of trucks, others may just, just regular parking.
I was gonna say, if you took the fence down to make it more pleasing to the eye, you could put some sort of cable around the whole fence, and that would restrict driving through. I mean, I don't really see it, I just wanna clean it up, other things like this ours, and we, you know, we talk about cleaning our stuff up. Um, it should be cleaned up, and that's all I'm asking for, uh, there's no restriction to the, I don't, I don't see a reason to restrict it, I mean, we want people to park wherever, um, you know, it becomes a hangout, or tra, trailers are sitting in park overnight, then we can create that, but I'm supposed to be in town anyway, so.
Yeah.
Um, the ones going to Georgia Pacific, we'll be coming in and going out, but, um, just my, my goal was just to get it cleaned up, so, if we can get something done there, that's all I'm asking for, it's just kind of so.
We don't own the backside of.
We all do, we own from both sides, except for that little corner.
There, there's stuff in there on the backside that looks like we don't own.
Yeah, that's, that's, the Georgia Pacific still owns that corner right there.
And that's the ugliest part.
Close that off.
And I think this will be more appropriate for a future topic, but what about having our food trucks staged there?
I was gonna say, when, next, next month, we can work on, decide what we wanna do, the, the tall properties that we own, so. Alright, good, alright, thank you.
We'll be cleaning that up, just having those things, the fence will remain, and we're just gonna clean up the grass, dirt, and pipes.
Oh, okay.
And work on something else to do with it.
That's what I said, next work session, we can put that down, decide what we do with the properties, I think, what you didn't ask for the other day, the discussion for two thousand twenty-six. Alright, uh, two thousand twenty-six work session dates.
Anyone have any problems with any of those dates, last meeting, you were given a, an outline of all of those dates, those tentative dates? You said we wanted to keep them on a Tuesday, wanna move them to a Thursday, everyone was good with keeping them on the third Tuesday?
Tuesday suits me better than Thursday, but, um, I may come back and ask for some different dates or something later in the year. But for the first six months, we could be busy with various activities, budgets, and all that kind of stuff, so.
What some other boards have done is they have them set as tentative dates, where they may meet or they may not meet. My question whether we wanna put that in there as well, and so it opens it up for the public to know that these are the dates that we will be, if we have a work session, but it also doesn't hamstring us to those dates, um, if we don't have any discuss, that we're just coming up here to waste the public's time.
I don't have a problem with that, and I don't have a problem with us, if we don't get too tied up in a regular meeting, talk about what we might want to have for discussion purposes two weeks later, so that we got some idea of what we're actually meeting on, rather than just coming in and taking whatever may appear.
I'm fine with that, that's a good idea.
As long as we have work sessions, I'm fine.
If we actually have work station, work sessions on our calendar, prior meeting before, if we need to change that date, our council, we can do it at that time. So, what is the problem with having it on the calendar?
It would always be on the calendar, from what I'm suggesting, it's just a question of whether we actually exercise it, is how the other board does it.
I'm not understanding, what.
So they have, they, they pass the dates for their city council meetings, or their county council meetings, they pass their work session dates, and then whether they exercise it, or whether they actually meet for their work session, um, is dependent upon what business they have to attend to. And so what it means is the public would know the dates that they were gonna have a work session, and then come in that month, if they were to have one, then the date would appear, and it would be utilized. If they don't have business to attend to, then they don't utilize the date.
What should we?
So the dates were January twenty-seven, February seventeen, March seventeen, April seven, May nineteen, let's see, April twenty-first, May nineteen, June sixteen, July twenty-first, August eighteen, September fifteen, October twentieth, November seventeen, and December fifteen.
So, going along with what Bryant was, is what you proposed, what, what Sheila said, if, at the council meeting, if it comes, it looks like we may not need a work session, then that would be the time that we can decide whether we have one or not.
And also, as Mr. Milling said, on the normal agenda, no more Tuesday night meeting of each month, then we can put on the agenda at the end, to bring to the table what would you like to have to discuss for as a workshop session.
Sure.
Um, and if nobody's bringing anything to the table, then at that point, we could say, well, there's no need to have a meeting next month, if we don't have anything really to work on, if we do, then we'll present what we want to work on, maybe like start working on that for the next two weeks.
So, right, and do we have a work session for January?
Yes, ma'am, January, uh, twenty-seventh. Yes, ma'am, January, uh, twenty seventh, because of the municipal association being January twentieth.
Oh, okay.
Twenty first, uh, the date would be January twenty seventh.
So, um, cause I, I have something very specific I wanna deal with at that work session. So I should, I will let us, let us know in, at our regular January work se- I mean, our regular city, city council. Okay.
There's something to say there in between, if something comes up, and we wanna add it to it, we still have something.
Well, you know, the, uh, Judge Millen, uh, Councilman Millen was just talking about this April fifth, the, uh, April seventh regular council meeting date. Saying that that was Easter week, and we might meet, because Easter's April fifth, and so we might need to move it. The good thing about, if we go ahead and put the calendar in place, since the ordinance requires us to meet at least once a month. That if you have to cancel one this, the regular meeting, you can always move it to this date that you have for your second. For the work session can become your council meeting. I bet that's, um, that if that's the case.
Just wanted to be sure if we had, didn't have school kids with families off, if they wanted to come. Yours is the week before, we don't know yet, but that would, that would be fine with me.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the twenty twenty six work session, um, work session schedule or calendar.
I'd like to amend it, to add, may meet, may not, depending on council.
I'll stick to the motion.
Mr. Miller?
Which motion are we voting on?
Let's say, why, he just amended.
I guess. Second to his amendment.
Come on, God.
I will, I will vote, and if we decide to have it, I'll be here.
All right, uh, purchase of trash truck, pan, purchasing new trash truck?
Well, Kimberly was removed from the, uh, agenda, so she's not here. The accountant was supposed to come to talk to us about that. But, you know, I just asked that we've already, we found out we had some overage, and our, a little overage that maybe we, that we definitely. And that's something maybe in the new year that we need to discuss, um. Making, going forward with purchasing a trash truck, and let's look towards that, and in January, let's, we'll have those numbers. Maybe Kimberly can come, I think she had a family issue, but she was gonna send some information as well, but that was removed. So, I would just like for us to continue to think about it, we don't want to wait for those trash trucks to go down again. And since we know that it takes about approximately six months for one to come in, then we need to go ahead and place an order for one. And get one ordered, so that we'll be prepared should something happen. And not have, uh, the same issues that we had for the last few months. Uh, that's just, uh, a recommendation, and I hope everyone was for us to begin to look at that and begin, um. Thinking it over, mulling it over, so that we can move forward and have a greater in-depth discussion in January.
What, what is status on the third truck that we found in the shop for a couple of months?
I'll be in repair, that's what I'm looking at.
I was gonna include that in my general report. Uh, actually, truck one went down when, uh, the department went to go get it. On its way back from Lexington, it was down outside the road. Uh, PD Fleet then towed the truck back to the PD area. And, um, apparently there were wiring issues, and that just took a very long time. That was the thirteenth of November, Mr. Holland has, um, came and told me today that he was expecting a call. Uh, to pick it up, so we'll get it back in the morning.
Now, you said truck number one, is that the truck they were wanting to pick up, the third truck that was being fixed? The, the other three trucks that were fixed are still.
Now, operation and in service as far as.
So the third, third truck that was fixed, they went to pick it up, and then there was another problem with it?
Yes.
So, yeah, we definitely need to look about.
And we're still, uh, two years, I think, approximately, Mr. President's not here to determine this exactly, but, um, I understand that we're close to two years. That we still owe on the other two trucks, but I agree that we need to have a pathway to not wait till the last minute, make sure that we're nowhere prepared. Ahead of time, um, whether the trade those in down there, or, um, be ready to buy another one, but not finance it for ten years. Hope we've had a better pathway, but, yeah, we can discuss that in January, and get the numbers from, um, your account, and make sure we're good with everything. Okay, all right, uh, city managers update, uh, body cameras.
Good evening, council, thank you for your time. Um, standing before you tonight, uh, in a little bit of a predicament. Um, our Axon, our body cameras that officers wear, um, are serviced through Axon. Our contract with them ends this month. Um, usually it's an automatic, uh, contract that renews every year. And it's been costing us about nine thousand dollars a year, to which we apply for a grant from the state. And we usually get back that nine thousand dollars. But this year, we applied for a grant with the state, and we were awarded thirty one thousand dollars for body cameras and equipment. And in purchasing new body cameras, we learned that there are new service contracts, we'd said new cameras, and the technology that the cameras burned. So our, in speaking with Axon, we, we tried to reduce, um, what this contract was gonna cost us. Um, in a nutshell, over five years, it's gonna cost us about forty thousand dollars a year. Now, this year, um, I have it at thirty four, with a thirty one thousand dollar grant. So I've, I've got this year covered, as far as my budget. Um, and next year, uh, we will apply for another grant. But with the technology, um, our request for grants money will be different than it was last year. Where we only usually ask for eight or nine thousand dollars to meet our storage fees on our contract. Next year, we will be asking for monies back, or storage fee, and the technologies that go along with the new cameras. They've always given us almost every penny back, I don't see them changing anything. Um, I can't guarantee you that we can get the grant for the next five years. Um, but I would like y'all to give Ms., uh, Ms. Hawkins permission to enter into a contract with Axon. Um, for the next five years for our body camera services.
So we have to go ahead and, um, we have to go ahead and sign a contract for, you said, five, four years?
For five years.
Five years, we had signed a contract for five years, the first year here, we're covered.
Yes.
For the four years that we're staying, that we may not be covered, so that's clear on that. But, um, we never know if we're gonna be covered until you file for the grant every time anyway.
Yes, sir.
But it had been being, cost for nine thousand, now gone to forty thousand, but the forty thousand will stay in place for the, it's locked in for that total amount each year.
Yes, sir, um, thirty nine thousand eight hundred and forty two dollars and fifty six cents.
Per year.
Yes, sir, per year. Um, one of the.
There's nobody else to, to sub this out, is this the only place that you have?
I mean, there are other services, there's Motorola, um, and if you, and I'm not saying anything bad about Motorola. Motorola, they offer a, a quality product, um, and they are competitive with Axon. We are familiar with Axon, they do our body cameras, uh, they do, they're going to be doing, they're getting cars. Um, the sheriff's office just went with them, and we can share technology. Um, I can upload a video, attach it to a case file, and send it to the solicitor's office without having to print. Uh, burn it on a disk, and send it to them, get them signed for it, six months later, they go, where's my video? Uh, send it to you, there it is, it's, it's a, um, they signed a contract with any Paxon to get our videos. Same with Hartsell, um, if they capture some video that we need, they can share theirs with us. We catch, capture some video they need.
With, with this company?
Yes.
So if you went with a different company, you wouldn't.
It's a little more awkward, and just as if not more expensive.
So you have researched and compare the other co- the other companies that, that, that Curtis is, uh.
I, I have, I cannot quote you their numbers, um, before.
For your operation, this is what you.
But what you can say, though, is that every, the municipalities and a- around us are using this. And that's gonna make sharing video back between the agencies seamless.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
What do we get for forty thousand?
Um, we, um, redaction, uh, I, I, I go to a house, the officer's coming to my house. And, um, for, for burglary, um, dogs in a neighborhood, barking or whatever. And just accidentally, my wife walks by in her nightgown, and, but that video has to go out. It can automatically be redacted, where I just capture that one scene, and it automatically follows that person around, redacting them. Um, juveniles, sometimes we have to redact some of their stuff a lot. Um, it will also do, um, dictation, um. The, the spoken word is turned into typed word, um, and some AI, um, automatic incident reports, which I, I, I don't want the guys using. But it can be used for automatic, just by what you say in the video, it, the technology can write your incident report. Um, also, every two and a half years, so we get new equipment, January first. Two and a half years, we get new equipment, at the end of our contract, five years, new, new equipment, new cameras.
So this includes the cameras, to not just storage?
The, the camera, the, the docking stations that they go on, every two, every two and a half years is replaced. Where, where now, y- your average warranty, if that first year is covered. Second year, you might get fifty percent, uh, fifty cent on a dollar, whatever it costs you to fix it. Um, third, fourth, and fifth year, you're on your own.
And every officer has one?
Um, in, in, in two and a half, it would depend on how it got damaged, and, and what was damaged. The, the camera itself costs nine hundred, fifty dollars, and then the technology goes on with it. I mean, if I busted a camera, if it, if, uh, jumped in a pool and it got totaled, um. It's only a thousand if you get, to pick up a new one, but I've already paid for the technology, and.
So you said this covers the body camera and the.
Docking station?
Yes, so if the police department expands, and you get six more officers, they'll be able to, it's already included, or, or how many cameras is this gonna?
We get twenty four, we get twenty four cameras, and, and of course, we can expand, that would change our, our annual contract.
So it's twenty four cameras?
Twenty four cameras.
I guess the next question would be, Chief Thavens is, I mean, you don't know next year, really. But we would just have to make sure we find the funds, but if we should be able to have the funds.
If, if the grants go up a half then, and you're gonna cover ninety seven percent of.
Right.
Um, and, and a little bit that comes along, we usually pick up from here or there, uh, with our budgets, um.
We're just, we're just saying, uh, next year, they decide they don't wanna write a grant, and we, we, I mean, don't want to fund the grant, we don't get it. Then we're locked into a contract, we're still.
Yes, sir. Which probably will be scrambling. And, and, and that's one of the guarantees, we could, I'd say guarantees not, but the state mandates it. So if you're gonna mandate it somewhere, you gotta give me something, so, um, you might not get a hundred percent of that forty thousand. But, um, hopefully, that, they'll keep doing it ninety seven percent of.
Is the state aware that Axion is raising their rates significantly?
Um, I believe that, 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 this technology has been out for a few years. Um, with, with other agencies has had to come in and assist us. Um, they wanna know what type of camera we're running, and we're running two steps ago. Um, so they're looking for today's technology, so they're, they're, they're aware of it, that, that it's already costing other agencies this much and more.
Your lobby, your association lobbying the legislature for budget fund?
Me too, yes, sir.
So you have to, to make a motion to approve it?
Well, uh, make a motion to approve it and or allow Ms. Hawkins to enter into a contract for the city or the city.
I'll motion that we approve the contract for forty thousand with Axion. A year. Well, I think we can only do one year, but yeah.
Fire your contract for a thousand, you're for the five-year contract?
As stated.
As motion carries, there's a five-year agreement to go into contract, a five-year contract. With this company for forty thousand per year.
Thank you.
I'm General Board.
I've already discussed the first item, uh, on the truck. Um, I wanted to share with you, uh, my way of updating on the pool. Um, we've had to get some ADA compliance work done, and now that's finishing up. Um, in my mind, the pool project is done, however, families engagement would like to, uh, use the remaining balance. Of the total project, uh, budget for some equipment that they feel is necessary. Um, I wanna get it all finished first, and then, you know, double line it and see exactly how much is left. Um, and if y'all are agreeable to that, uh, I guess either way, it would be fine. But, uh, um, I thought we, we just were gonna just get it ready for them and give it to them. But that's, this request was, um, remind, I was reminded of this request for some additional, yeah, equipment that we could, that could be useful. To them to run the pool. Do y'all have any, it would be all less than five thousand dollars?
What are the equipment is?
I can't remember right now, um, I'm. I think that at one point, they wanted to put a, a air conditioning in there, and, uh, we decided not to do that. But we do have, um, camera equipment, electronics in there, and they do need to keep it cool. So I suggested maybe a, one that sits in the corner, and just closes that one room. Uh, not to put a hole like we did at the, at Splash Pad, you just knocked a hole in it. Uh, that particular project was only a thousand fifty dollars, so we could do that, but there, I just thought the wall, they're gonna put a logo up. Didn't really need to have that sticking out on that one side. Um, if you're, uh, if you don't have any acquisition to that, once we get the invoicing from Scott's Construction. For the little bit of, um, remediation that was done, then we'll, um, I can go, we can go from there. But, um, it's, it, I think it was a great project. Um, also, the, there may be a little bit of a change in the ladies restroom, we'll see, once he gets through, uh, with his. Um, updating the ADA compliance. Um, also, uh, just by way of a notation to y'all, unless there's some heartburn over it. We do have two tenants that have needs in, on the public square. Um, Mr. Etheridge has advised that we do have a tenant relations, a tenant landlord relationship with them. And there is, uh, uh, one tenant who does not have any HBAC. And to get that in is gonna be forty two hundred dollars. However, currently, they are on a reduced rate of pay for, for the rental space. Um, and sometimes we don't get any, so I was wondering if. To me, I feel like the, uh, the path of least resistance is the best way. And I would rather just heat where that person is and where she receives her clients, uh, with a stand-up model that can heat and cool. Um, she is not on an outside wall, so they have to go up, and I just, again, verify that with. Um she is not on an outside wall, so they have to go up and I just again verify that with Adams. Um they, it, they would have to just take it out. It's so old that he said if you start fixing one piece, another piece might show up as broken too, so he, if it was him, he suggested replacing it, but it's forty-two hundred dollars. Um but I think we can find a, a portable unit that could still provide comfort for um this particular tenant and their clients because you don't have to heat the entire open space, it's a very open space. Uh so if y'all don't have any opposition to that, I would suggest we get the, the, the uh, something better than a space heater, it actually will heat and cool. Um the other tenant on the square, not very far from there, has a mold problem and that is forty-five hundred dollars. Um and we need to, as, as I said, stated before, Mr. Etheridge has um stated that we have a tenant um landlord uh relationship and we need to go ahead and get that taken care of, just by way of an update. Uh that came out a little bit over forty-five hundred, was that right, Ms. Etheridge?
Yes, ma'am.
Looked at over forty-five hundred.
Uh and that's all I have to share at this.
I've got, not on these items, but just a, a general question. Uh we had spoken previously about how to handle the Christmas wrapping and the boxes, et cetera, that are going to come up later in this month, what's your proposal for that?
I asked Mr. um Holloman came to see me today. Um I think now that we have the third truck, I think he's here, is he still here, Mr. Holloman?
Yes.
I hate to put you on the spot. Um but did you hear Mr. Millen's question about recycling?
No, no, I didn't.
He wa, he wanted to know where we are um about restarting recycling. Right now, he told me that people are filling up both the blue and the green. Um which when, even if it was recycling and they let it stay, it's just kind of mushed up. But I'll, I'll let you answer the question, what you feel uh should be your recommendation on recycling program restarting.
I would recommend after these holiday stuff.
Say that again?
I would recommend after the holiday stuff pays.
What are we going to do about Christmas gift wrapping and that kind of stuff, how you want to handle that?
Trash.
Um I got both trucks, we're going to double up on, on the routes to get, keep that stuff caught up.
So we are?
I have both trucks.
I could be fine with that if we're picking up green and blue.
Yeah.
Because I'm hearing from all over this community that we're skipping the blue cans.
Yeah, we spent about all day picking up blue today.
Okay, I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm just saying what the community is telling me, sometimes truthful, sometimes not, just like everybody in this world.
You're right.
So um when we go down the street, we're going to pick up both cans at the exact same time?
Yeah, that's the thing.
Okay, and we got two trucks running, so if we run out of capacity, one of them's going to go to the landfill and the other truck will keep on running?
We actually have, we get back the third one in the morning.
Okay.
This is perhaps just an oversight, but my other next door neighbor had the green cart out and boxes, just general boxes. The boxes got left, the green bo, the green cart got empty. So now they picked up their boxes and stuck them in the green roll cart. So there may be some miscommunication about exactly what needs to, to be done, but I'm sure the community will be happy to know. The Christmas wrappings and the boxes that come with that will be picked up.
Yeah, I'm in the middle of getting all that under control.
Okay.
Cause Christmas wrapping technically can't be recycled anyway because of the tape and stuff, right? That's right, it's supposed to go in the trash, I remember that, because of the tape and all.
It's the shipping boxes is the issue, it's the shipping boxes. So I guess, uh just make sure that the guys know, if you don't mind, um between now and the new year, if there's a box beside the trash can, take that extra second, please pick those up and thank them for their time and hopefully the community will too. All right.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
I have a motion going to executive session in accordance of Salkon, thirty dash four dash seventy, public body may hold a meeting closed to the public for one or more of the following reasons. One, discussion of employment, appointment conversation, promotion, demotion, discipline or release of an employment employee, a student or a person regulated by a public body or the appointment of a person to a public body or administrative department. However, if a necessary hearing involving an employer or client is held, employee or client has the right to demand the hearing. We conduct it publicly, thus noting nothing contained in this item shall be, shall prevent the public body in the discretion from deleting names of the other employees or clients whose records were submitted or used in at the hearing. Upon returning to open session, council may take action of matters discussed in executive session.
I think a motion is going to do executive session.
I'll second.